Everyone, today is Tuesday, June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. It is Flag Day. And I understand that it's the hundred year anniversary since President Wilson declared it to be Flag Day, so that's pretty important. That was, I was informed by Supervisor Gitlin of that fact, maybe he'll bring it up a little bit later. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all of the special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. So at this time, we're going to take a few moments of reflection, so we can do that at this time. Okay, now if you'll please all stand, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you, Chairman. It is Flag Day. Ready, begin. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Introduction of new employees. Do we have any? None at this time. County Council, actions from closed session?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Okay, I'd at this time request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any such items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We're going to have some brief reports from supervisors on their activities for the last couple of weeks, and we are going to start with Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you, Chairman Hemmison. Well, as Chairman Hemmison mentioned, today is Flag Day. Actually, three dates on June fourteenth commemorating the flag of the United States. The first one was seventeen seventy-seven, where the Second Continental Congress declared a flag of the United States, which was followed by twenty-six, nineteen, nineteen sixteen, when Earl Wilson declared June fourteenth Flag Day, and it was officially entered in the Congressional Record, June fourteenth, nineteen forty-nine. So, that's Flag Day. Now, on to business. The Visitor Bureau convened a special meeting to discuss the misunderstanding that was presented here at our last meeting regarding the Capitol display. The Visitors Bureau affirmed the maximum budget allotted for the Capitol display was thirty-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and it was not the five thousand dollars that was misrepresented here by those who are putting the flag display together, the, excuse me, the Capitol display together. So, it is expected that display will be in Sacramento on the rotunda at the, across from the Governor's Office within the next thirty days. The Chamber of Commerce Board also met to discuss last-minute details on the July fourth parade and the July third DEC party. Hope you'll join us for both of those great events. And the new Labor Day event presented by the city, which will be entitled Find Your Park, was also discussed, and that's an exciting new event around Labor Day. Saturday, to take a bite out of blight, volunteers joined the Just Serve and Interfaith Council to clean up the cemetery. That was Saturday before Memorial Day, and restoring dignity to these hallowed grounds, if not always properly maintained. On Memorial Day, I observe ceremonies to those who served their country in the armed forces and have passed on. Wednesday, June first, the local mental health board met for its once-a-month meeting. The board made two rather significant changes. It decided to move its meeting from a very small conference room at K Street over here to the Flynn Center, to accommodate what was becoming a rather large group of, growing group of interested party, public parties, who want to come in and observe those goings-on at our meeting. And it also voted unanimously to invite a member of the Crescent City Council to sit on the mental health board. This past weekend, I attended the Del Norte County Health Fair and the farmer's market, which were both held on the fairgrounds. Last week, I participated in Safe Roots to School program in helping conduct a session in the proper riding of a bicycle. For many of the kids ages through kindergarten through twelve, fifth grade, it was their first time on a bike. Literally, they'd never been on a bike before, so that was a bit of a inexperience keeping them forward and making sure that the helmet stayed on their head, and helmets do work. So, that was a good experience working at Best Maxwell School for that Safe Roots to School program. Tuesday, as you know, was Election Day. A lot of drama from the presidential primaries kept voter turnout at a kind of a modest level. The afternoon, that afternoon, I listened to the Visitors Bureau presentation from Cassandra Heseltine, who's the Del Norte County, Humboldt County Film Commissioner, as to what projects are on the horizon for Del Norte County. And that same evening, spent some time at Republican Headquarters, where I observed the ups and the downs of a very interesting race for supervisors in Districts One, and of course, discussed for Two and Five. This past Thursday, traveled to Eureka to attend our monthly North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District meeting, where Commissioners listened to report on the status of electric battery-operated vehicles and its real costs in comparison with internal combustion engines. The state has mandated new requirements on vehicles sold in California to meet certain levels, and that was of the discussion at the AQMD last Thursday. Sunday, as is my practice every six weeks, I joined fellow Lions Club members in our Adopt a Highway program, which removes trash and litter from the apron off the one-oh-one North Highway, about where McNamara Road goes north for a mile or so, two miles or so. And that same afternoon, I changed some clothes quickly and went over to Crescent Elk Middle School, where we saw a great show called Under the Big Top, which was a part of the Dance Art Studio recital. It was a standing room only at Crescent Elk, and it was a great show. Entertainment was great, the kids were great, everybody had a great time. Also wish to announce that our Take a Bite Out of Blight program will be seeking volunteers to commence its second annual north side of the Harvard cleanup, to help keep Howe Drive from the lighthouse all the way across down Howe Drive free of debris, cigarette butts, trash, and other undesirables, and to maintain the area in pristine condition. Those interested, please give me a call, and that will be Saturday, July second, at nine-thirty. We'll meet at the Battery Point Lighthouse parking lot, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to start off with the Local Transportation Commission meeting that we attended last week. Some great discussion on two main points I'd like to bring up. One, Caltrans reaction to safety issues on Highway one ninety-nine corridor at mile post ten-point-five. I think we've all recognized here in the last four to five months that there's been a significant uptick in accidents along that stretch of highway, in particular at this one location. Caltrans has responded to it and are seeking to improve that area temporarily until they have a study in place that will allow probably a more permanent solution, but at least they are responding to the request from the Local Transportation Commission to move forward with some kind of fix to look for solutions at that location. In addition, the Transportation Commission was also visited by the Haven family, specific to Highway one ninety-nine and Elk Valley Crossroads. As many of you are aware, the Haven family lost their mother last year. It just so happened to be the date of our meeting, the anniversary of that accident. It's sad that we continue seeing accidents at that location and haven't really made a whole lot of progress, although the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission and Caltrans are working on solutions, but the community needs response quicker. And I wish there was a way we could move through the bureaucracies of transportation faster than we currently are, because as we were told by Steve Wakefield, that has become the highest intersection for response to collision within the county, even more so than our hill up here to the south of us. It does need to be looked at, and it'll now become a standing agenda item on the Local Transportation Commission meeting, if anybody's interested in having that discussion with the Transportation Commission. Attended a Smith River Neighborhood Watch meeting, got there a little late. Unfortunately, Eric's deputy, Sheriff Aperson's deputy, was getting hammered on pretty good. Definitely an uptick of crime that most neighbors believe they're experiencing within the Smith River neighborhood, although the Sheriff's Patrol's excellent. The uptick in response time, and more importantly, the visibility of the Sheriff's Department in Smith River and including Hiuchi has been excellent. I really have to commend the sheriff for paying a great deal more attention out there to the Smith River area. I don't know what the solutions are at this point to the uptick that we're seeing in some crime, but I do know the sheriff's response has been excellent. We'll just continue having to work on the solutions together. Attended with many folks around the table, but the literacy symposium was the highlight of, I believe, the last couple of weeks. It's a movement within our community that this board has been very active in supporting through the Children's Bill of Rights, in addition with the Del Norte County School District and every agency, so we no longer work in silos here in our community. But the statistics that were mentioned at the literacy symposium, and I'm sure Supervisor Finnegan can recite all these by verse, as he's been very involved with them for the last seven to eight years. We have to do something about literacy issues in our community if we are ever going to drive economic success. For every one dollar spent on a child to read by the age, by the time they're in third grade, will yield seven dollars to this community in the future. Those statistics hit home hard, especially when you don't make that investment and they wind up in our social system, or they wind up with Sheriff Aperson at our county jails. That investment must be made, and it must be made soon, and we all need to work to get there, to get those children to read. Had a meeting with probation department, and then also Del Norte County School District on some issues there. Had conversations with Matt St. John on continuing to follow up on the outstanding national resource water designation and trying to get meetings with their staff and their directors. Had some quick discussions with issues with a neighborhood on North Bank, specific to what they believe is a meth lab near Salton Creek, and some concerns around that. Following very closely, as we'll discuss today, Senate Bill thirteen ninety-six, which is the inner-coast range conservancy bill that Senator McGuire has signed on to as a co-author. Also following very closely right now, Senate Bill thirteen seventeen, which is a groundwater extraction permit that will be probably another unfunded mandate that this county will be saddled with unless we could really get our classification back down to where it needs to be as a low priority. Also follow very closely and work very closely with our agricultural community on Assembly Bill twenty-seven fifty-seven, which was specifically an ag overtime exemption bill to eliminate the ag overtime exemptions throughout the state. It would have impacted our lily growers, more importantly, but the entire farming community here in Del Norte County hard. The bill did fail on the floor. Glad to see that happened, but I'm sure it will be back up in some way, shape, or form. Also still following very closely, Senate Bill eighty-eight. I know the county did receive a response to Senate Bill eighty-eight, and so did the local natural resource conservation district. Hopefully, there's a way we could work with the local resource conservation district to continue to find solutions, because at this point, none was offered by the state Water Resources Control Board in response to those requests for some kind of exception for a county like ours that receives a great deal more moisture than the rest of the state. Also followed very closely, AB seventeen ninety-two here in the last couple of weeks, which is around elk and issuing tags to fairly recognized tribes, but we're also following that very closely. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Supervisor Finnegan.
Yeah, thank you. I also had a fun couple of weeks, a few meetings. Started off with the Healthcare District, and went there for one purpose and ended up being there for another. The first was that the Family Resource Center was asking for some matching funds for a VISTA, for an AmeriCorps member, to help work on family programs regarding child abuse and programs directed at the strengthening families at the Family Resource Center, and there was a one-year commitment there. While I was there, Tamara Layton, who was the executive director of the Local Transportation Commission, also made a presentation, which I was interested in since I'm the chair of that organization, and it had to do with the repatriation of patients that have left and been shipped out to get care at other hospitals. There was a proposal put forward that the, I would frame it, that the Local Transportation Commission is the glue or is the mediator in a solution, rather than throwing rocks and blaming people for whose responsibility it is. When a patient leaves this community and is sent out by Sutter Coast, there's still the responsibility of Sutter Coast, as is, and they remain that until they get back into this community. But rather than the blame game, we found a solution, and then, of course, that came to fruition at the Local Transportation Commission. But at the Healthcare District, the hospital was asked, as well as the Healthcare District, to participate, and agreed to do so. Went to the Child Care Council meeting on indoor play space, attended by the city, the county, Family Resource Center, Child Care Council, making some good progress there. Had a meeting at the Family Resource Center with, some of the other supervisors were there as well, with the EDA, talking about economic development from the government's point of view. Love that saying when they say, "I'm from the government, I'm here to help you." Well, we're going to hold their feet to the fire when it comes to economic development, hopefully. A lot of strings attached when you do something like that. Had a schools two-by-two, which we haven't met as often as we probably have needed to, but we talked with, regarding the schools, probation, regarding the best use of personnel, both in probation in the schools and the school's resource officer, and how we can really work together to maximize our resources. Then had an airport JPA meeting. All good stuff. They, we have broken ground on the first phase of the construction for the terminal, and has to do with the infrastructure for sewer, water, bringing that in, roads. Had a first five meeting, Children and Families Commission meeting. Lots of good stuff going on there, and in fact, we will have our, we talked about the transition into dual board, so you're going to have a Children and Families Commission board that's already been established, and then we are also establishing again a five-oh-C, five-oh-one-C-three board for the Family Resource Center, making it a private nonprofit so we can access funds rather than government funds to go ahead and help to offset some of the bills that occur there and to expand the services. Went to the literary symposium on election night, and that probably was, might sound like heresy, but was the most important thing I did that night. The Supervisor Howard, I think, spoke to that. There was a great group of people, there was a lot of good follow-up the next day and days after. Had to do with building healthy communities, had to do with, well, the schools, everybody that was involved. And, yeah, there are facts and figures that we can go through regarding the benefits of it, but it's more than just the reading level, the vocabulary level of eighteen months dictating the reading level at third grade, and I know that the mission is the three-twenty-three, making sure by twenty-twenty-three, every third grader, a hundred percent of the third graders read a reading level. Right now, it's about fifty percent, and there is, it has been documented, although be poo-pooed by some people, that if you don't have your reading level up at third grade, it is an indicator whether you're going to graduate from high school, and if you don't graduate from high school, there are solid numbers of where you're going to end up. And it probably is going to be seeing Sheriff Aperson more than it is going to be seeing your counselor, your college counselor. But, there's something else in the mix there. I mean, you can't just say, okay, we're going to teach all these kids a great vocabulary by eighteen months. We have to really dig down. And it's, while we say fifty percent overall throughout the district, there are special concerns of mine, because Clamath, which has not received the educational prowess that the rest of the community has for various reasons, is at seventy percent. And so, we need to really attack those issues. But there is great attention being paid there and great collaboration, and I'm going to focus on that, on the positive, turning that curve. Obviously, elections, lots of fun there. And then, we're going to have some more fun in the future with that. Local Transportation Commission, again, the repatriation, we did take action, that the Local Transportation Commission did take action to put some money on the table, along with the Healthcare District, along with the Sutter Coast Hospital, to work on a mechanism for bringing people back that have been sent out of the area that cannot afford to come back, to make sure that they're returned home without burdening their own financial situation. Had calls both from the Congressman and Senator McGuire, talked about elections, but also talked about some of the issues that are pressing, everything from Last Chance Grade to literacy. Last night, went to the Brookings City Council meeting, asking for money. Money for the airport, asking them to buy in. They are currently working on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar ODOT grant that would go to the airport, and they will know that within two days, and that definitely could be their contribution. They already contributed over five-hundred-thousand dollars on last year's grant. Aside from that, watch out if you see me in the passenger seat and you see a teenage girl in the driver's seat. I'm out driving with my daughter, preparing her for her driving test. Saw that cringe, me too. And went to my son's graduation at Southern Oregon. And then aside, you know, I know it's election year, and I'm not, I don't subscribe to the grandstanding like other people do, but there's protocol when there's issues in my district, or any district, and especially when it's blight. I make sure that it goes through the process that we established, actually, a process that we established really the very first year that I was a supervisor, and then we have since funded, I think it was about a hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars last year, we spent on a code enforcement officer. And I tell people in my district, if you've got a problem and you don't want to sign your name to the complaint, tell me. But you've got to fill out the complaint, or get me the paperwork so I can fill out the complaint for you, and I will sign it. I need the parcel number and the complaint. And such a situation was in a couple of vehicles down the South Beach Road, South Clamath Beach Road. They're in the process, as the ones on Redwood Road, as about a half a dozen other ones. And the person, after following up with me, took it upon themselves to write to the Chamber of Commerce. Well, there's protocol with this Board of Supervisors, that if there's an issue in somebody's district, you're supposed to confer with that supervisor regarding that issue, rather than sharing it with their competitor that you might be supporting. And so, whether you are a member of the Chamber of Commerce or not, I would ask that you follow that process. And with that, we're going to have some more fun today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I also had a few things going on. I did, I did attend the Memorial Day services at the cemetery, which is always a great thing. I don't know that a great thing is the right word, but I feel almost a necessary thing for me to attend. Had some conference calls on interaction between whales and Dungeness crab gear. Those are ongoing things. I do have future meetings that I will be attending. Along with the CAO, there was a webinar, webinar on marijuana that, Lesson Two, was not very revealing or interesting at this point, but soon will be some more meetings that we will be, the more webinars that we'll be attending. I went to Eureka to the North Deal meeting, which is a chance to, to find out how, what kind of progress is being made on Caltrans projects within Del Norte County, or within District One, really, so I, you know, get to hear some about Mendocino, as well as Humboldt and Del Norte County. Last Chance Grade is always one of the first things that we talk about, as well as one-ninety-nine, one-ninety-seven, Dr. Fine Bridge. That project is still moving forward. They're expecting, I think, completion in two thousand nineteen, and that maybe seems like a long ways off, but it comes around sooner than you think. So we had some good discussions on, on projects there. The Willetts, excuse me, the Willetts bypass is nearing completion and will be ready for traffic very soon. As Supervisor Finnegan said, we had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. Things are going very well there. We're moving right along. And Supervisor Howard brought up a lot of bills that we're both working on currently. SB thirteen ninety-six, which is the inner-coast conservancy bill that Del Norte County is included in, and personally, I think we should be opting out if there's a possibility. I did participate in a conference call from the Farm Bureau that we had and had some discussions about, but, you know, I think it, I don't know that it's necessarily a good thing for Del Norte County. I've sat in, at least for a few minutes, on a webinar on some, on a maintenance program along with the CAO and our maintenance superintendent, Ed Fulton, and I didn't stay very long. Was not extremely interesting, but I'm sure Ed will come back with a recommendation of what he thinks we need. I think it's kind of redundant on how wanted it is, although those programs sometimes are very good. I attended Gender Review. I also went, participated in the literacy symposium, which all of us who showed up there did. There was audience participation, I guess you would call it. So, and I like the fact, they bring up a lot of statistics, and for Del Norte County, those statistics are usually not very good. The statistics are good, the outcomes are certainly not very good. But I like this particular symposium because it was solution-oriented. We're looking at getting to the root of the cause and getting solutions in place to We're looking at getting to the root of the cause and getting solutions in place to accomplish the goal of three by twenty-three, which is everybody's to read at the third grade level, proficiently at the third grade level by the year 2023, which, again, seems like a long ways off, but it sneaks up on you quicker than you think. So, really excited about that. Good things going on there. And as was mentioned by both Supervisor Howard and Finnegan, we had a Local Transportation Commission Meeting. They went through that pretty good, so I'll skip over that. I attended Celebration of Life for longtime coach and instructor Dale Thomas out at the Delmar County Golf Course. It was well-attended, a lot of people there, a lot of stories. Really touched me. He was my coach, he was an instructor, he was also a friend, a golfing buddy. I'm gonna miss him a lot. Also wanna note the passing, you probably already know Jimmy Smith, former Humboldt County Supervisor, and maybe somebody that you didn't know, but who I worked with pretty closely over the last fifteen or twenty years. Tommy Ancona from Fort Bragg, who was involved in Fishing Management Group that, that I belong to. So those people will all be missed a lot. And as Supervisor Gitlin said, Under the Big Top was a big show. I gotta say, my granddaughter was the star, I think. Anyway, for me, she was, four-year-old granddaughter, participated in that, and we all had a great time. So, very well done. Those are always great activities to, to join in on, so that was all, that was all good. So now, at this time, we will receive a brief report from our CAO, Jay Serena.
We've been spending a lot of time in regards to the budget prep for the recommended budget that will come before the Board at the next meeting. Conducted HR Manager Interviews and the Hiring Process, and we'll introduce the new HR Manager at the next meeting. I sat on the interview panel for the public portion of the City Manager Interviews. Had an EOC and OES Meeting, had various meetings with county departments and department heads, attended the Community Corrections Partnership Meeting, had a meeting with the RHS Director, and also attended the Delmar Unified School District Meeting with probation. And was also able to attend the celebration Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned for Dale Thomas. He was also one of my teachers, he was also my coach, and overall, just a very good person.
Great, thank you. So we are past the ten twenty-five hour. It's time for a public comment. Members of the public may address the Board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the Board. If you are addressing the Board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the Board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, then I'm gonna close the public comment period. You will still be able to comment on items that are on the agenda if you wish to. And it is ten thirty, so we're gonna get an update from Mr. Palmer on the Smith River National Recreation. Dave, thank you for coming. You're always welcome.
Thank you. Dave Palmer, District Ranger, Smith River, NRA. So I'd like to, once again, thank the Board for having me back. It's always a pleasure, and I'm trying to live up to my commitment to be here every month. I think next month, I'll try to bring my recreation person, so he'll be a little more interesting than myself.
Great, love to have him.
So, the last month, I had an opportunity with my staff to go out and visit the hurdy-gurdy bridge project with the contractor and some of the county folks. You know, we took a look at the proposed staging area, the trees that they wanted to cut, and everything, everything seemed reasonable to me. And so, that special use permit is supposed to be out tomorrow.
Great.
Friday at the latest.
Good to hear.
So that's moving forward. And yeah, it, you know, straightforward project, no concerns on my part.
Good.
So, Teams is up here right now. They're doing our Gordon Mark. Because we don't have a marking crew on forest, we had to go with Teams. They're, they're getting settled in, getting their feet on the ground. I think one of their first comments was steep and brushy, so they must be used to marking timber over in the Sierras where it's a little more flat. But that is moving forward, and hopefully, by the end of summer, that'll be done. This summer, we're still looking to put the D by D out for bid.
Good.
You know, during the hurdy-gurdy bridge review, there were some concerns brought up about if they do start to cut the timber and move it out, how they were gonna get it out. You know, because the hurdy-gurdy bridge bypass is not conducive to a log of truck. And then, you have the other bridge, which I think has some width limits. But talking with Jeff Jones, probably actual work would not start until after both bridges are done. So I think we're looking good there. Travel management, yeah, it's, it's on track. Looking towards the end of July for a document. And I will follow up with Carol Spinos and make sure all the maps are up to date. And then, I also plan to get with Matt, the District Ranger, on the Wild River Ranger District of the Rogue River Siskiyou, because they just signed their travel management. And they're, it, it is gonna affect the NRA, because a couple of those access roads that go north from the Wymer Road, apparently way back when, we signed over management to the Rogue River Siskiyou.
Shame on you.
And I found this out the other day when I was talking to my staff, so, yeah, kind of news to me. All of our POC gates are open. Well, except for the one on Monkey Ridge, they're up there cutting the lock today because somebody decided to super glue. It closed, so. All the campgrounds are open, water systems are up and running. Doug Nguyen, my rec staff, is using all the rack funds to get everything fixed up, so everything's going pretty good.
Great.
We did get some, some snow up on Bear Basin Lookout, so it was all white this morning. I've got staff up there, they're gonna replace the roof up there. Other than that, that's it for the month.
Great, appreciate it. Any questions from Board members, comments? Roger?
Dave, will the public have an opportunity to see the travel plan before you move forward on it?
Yeah, they'll put the draft out, and that should be end of July.
Okay, okay, good.
Supervisor Finnegan?
So, current maps, Dave, for travel management of where people can ride their motorized vehicles on Forest Service roads. Had a constituent call the Forest Service, and the Forest Service guy said, call your supervisor.
Oh.
Don't think that was the right answer.
Yeah, no, you know.
Good, by the way.
Yeah, well, I told him to call you.
I know.
Yeah. I mean, so currently, all the Level Two roads are mixed use, so any Level Two road that, on the emblem, is open for, you know, ATVs and such.
Can we get some extra copies of maps that we can disseminate, or where should I tell them to go to get those?
You know, I can bring some down to Chamber of Commerce.
That'd be great.
Along with some, some more of our NRA rec guides.
Awesome.
So, I can get that.
Supervisor Howard, you got anything? Dave, thanks again, appreciate it so much. Really good to hear what's going on, and things look like they're moving forward, so appreciate.
Yeah, so far, you know, busy, but nice, quiet summer. And we did get some rain, so hopefully, the fire season is delayed.
We can hope so.
Okay, thanks again.
You bet.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Okay, so that's all of our timed items. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Oh, is there any public comment on that presentation? Get any questions or public? Okay, great. Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. Consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on consent agenda items only? Okay, seeing no public comment, then I'm gonna bring it back to the Board. Any comments or questions? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number five, conflict of interest. Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to budget transfer.
Move to approve. Budget Transfer 0602.
Okay, I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any public comment on this budget transfer, an amount of $7,400 within the Road Division? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the Board. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's prudent to, we can just have an explanation of what these funds are for. Heidi, are you here, if you wouldn't mind? Public is fully aware?
Good morning. The Road Division planned on purchasing a mechanics truck. We were considering purchasing it in the next fiscal year. We had proposed to spend approximately $55,000 on it. Fortunately, we were, had our eyes out and looking, and we were able to find a, a used mechanics truck down in Southern California that met all of our needs that, with shipping, licensing, and all those good things, came in just a little bit over $30,000. We had $22,000-plus dollars left in a line item for equipment and vehicles, and then also some remaining from another line item within the same budget object unit. And so, we proposed to move the money now in order to purchase the vehicle, and then we have already tentatively asked the budget team to remove the $55,000 request from next fiscal year. So, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any other questions? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair, if I might?
Yes.
We had a couple of things that dealt with the Road Department. I just wanted Jeffs here to congratulate him and thank him for the immediate response that you had down there in Salt Creek the other day for that little lady that, perfect.
Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna move on to General Government, item number twenty. Approve and adopt proposed ordinance and resolution for the rezone of general fine amendment proposed by the property owner of Green Diamond Resource. Mr. Hooper?
And there's no update on this particular item. It's essentially the same as you considered at the last meeting, just bringing it back for adoption.
Can I get a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Move, second that motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Public comment. Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back. Any questions or comments from Board members? Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number twenty-one. Approve and authorize the Chair to sign a letter of support for HR 5121, the GO Act. Mr. Hooper again.
Yep. So this item actually originated in the Natural Resources Goal Committee at the request of Chair Hemmingson. It's a piece of legislation putting, being put forth by Congressman Lamolfa. And essentially, what it would do would be to enhance access opportunities to the federal lands, BLM, Forest Service, et cetera. This would be a letter of support, and obviously, I believe the Board has taken a position that they wanna promote access and use of the federal lands, and this particular piece of legislation is certainly consistent with that, reduces some of the red tape and some of the bureaucratic hurdles that guides outfitters and recreational users currently have to contend with when they go for these special recreation permits. So, in theory, this bill would hopefully alleviate some of those issues. And if there's any questions available, that's essentially the other bill.
Okay, any questions? Cool. Thank you, Randy, I appreciate you putting that together. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve and authorize the Chair to sign a letter of support for HR 5129, the GO Act, which amends the Federal Lands Recreation Enhancement Act as requested by the Assistant Director, Community Development Department.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, then any further comments or questions from Board members?
No, Doug's always been, or Congressman Lamolfa's always been a friend of rural counties for as long as I can remember, so.
Yep. Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item twenty-two. Discuss, take possible action on the attached options for the Second Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement between Delmar County Board of Supervisors, City of Crescent City, and the Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority. Ted, did you wanna speak to this, please?
Very briefly, just summarizing that you've already seen this, and at the last meeting, Chair Hemmingson suggested some wording changes, and those have been incorporated into the second revised JPA agreement before you. And that was brought back to the Authority Board for approval before being redistributed for approval by the Board of Supervisors and the Crescent City Council. So, you're the first to hear this, the Crescent City Council has not yet reviewed these wording changes.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Any public comment? Can I get a motion?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can, Mr. Ward, can you come up that and explain the options available? There are three.
Well, at this point in time, there are no options. It's, it's really suggest additional wording changes.
Okay, so you, you had that, I read it in my report.
Yes.
There were three suggested wording changes.
The, the three areas.
Option one, option two, and option three. So what, can you explain that so that the public is fully aware of what these changes are going to be?
Sure. The, the first change is that, hang on. Regarding the authority budget, under the current JPA, the authority budget is first reviewed by the Authority Board and then brought for review and discussion by the City Council and the Board of Supervisors before it can be finally adopted. In this case, if these changes were approved by both the City Council and the Board of Supervisors, it would not be brought separately to the City Council and the Board of Supervisors, but it would be simply approved by the Solid Waste Authority Board. Similarly, this change would also have the public member who's elected by the other four Commissioners of the Solid Waste Authority, that public member would also not be subject to review and approval separately by the Board of Supervisors and the City Council. And then, finally, with respect to authority ordinances, all non-rate ordinances would still continue to come back to the Board of Supervisors and the City Council for additional review, but if it was an ordinance strictly related to rates and service fees, that those rate ordinances would not be brought back to the Board of Supervisors and the City Council.
So let me get a clear understanding. The motion that is before, as Mr. Chairman, is to discuss and take possible action on the attached options. Am I reading that correctly? Of the Second Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement. Are we voting on one option? Am I misreading your?
The, the, this has been brought before the Board of Supervisors on two earlier occasions.
With the.
And first, we had advisory votes on each of these issues, and then those were incorporated into the amended JPA, the amended JP.
Ted, if I could, I think, I think the misunderstanding is, is I personally had some changes that I wanted to see happen. And one of those changes that I can remember right off the top of my head, and I don't have the document in front of me, but, was that if you, if you didn't like the budget, for example, and you, and we made comments that said you didn't like the budget, and if you didn't show up at the meeting, that automatically meant that you were okay with whatever. So that has been changed to not reflect that you're saying that, yeah, it's okay. Just because you didn't show up at the meeting doesn't mean that you think it's okay. That still is, that's still a separate issue. So, there were just some minor changes that I personally wanna see. So that's the change part of this. We'd already agreed on those components, those three components that are in there. As a Board, we've already agreed on what they put in, but there was some wording on some of the other things, just some, what I think are just minor things. There was the inclusion, I think, of the, the, I just think, just the fact that we had a meeting and it was advisory was put into this agreement, which I didn't think was necessary, as well as council. So, we wanted that removed. And there was one other minor little thing. Those were the changes.
I thought there was a minor change on the public member also, if I'm not mistaken.
No, there, there was an additional minor change regarding the budget approval process, and that is when the authority budget will be, when it's initially heard by the Authority Board, will be forwarded to the County Administrative Officer and the City Manager. And in, in consultation with the Chair of the Board of Supervisors and the City Mayor, then they can decide whether or not to place that on the respective agendas for additional review.
Is that good, Roger? David, you have something?
Well, my understanding was, we got the options at the last meeting, we picked the options, and this reflects the options we already picked, there's no more options.
There's no more options.
That, that's correct, and it just, is the wording changes, as Chair Hemmingson clarified.
Good. So, I think we're, we're all good there. Uh, did I already ask for a public comment? Any public comment? Can I get a motion?
I thought you had one.
Did I? Did I already do a motion? I'm already good? Kind of losing it here just a little bit.
We got a motion and a second already.
Okay, we're all good. We got, uh, public comment. We're, any other comments or questions from board members? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. Um, now, is there a need for us to do the next item after we've passed that particular one? I mean, I'm having-
Yes, there is, because the changes that were just supported by the board supervisors have not been enacted by the city or the authority board yet.
Okay, thank you. So, this, uh, item number twenty-three, which is approved, the attached authority rate ordinance for the solid waste management authority, um, that, uh, item is something that we won't have to do, uh, if the city approves.
That's correct, sir.
This, this thing here, but we're here to approve this now, so if I can get a motion?
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back. Uh, any further discussions? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. Item twenty-four. Approve and adopt the road projects list, um, as presented. And CDD staff is going to make, uh, some sort of request to the Delmar Local Transportation Commission.
Yes.
Looks good.
We've been working over the next couple, last couple of months on an updated, updated road project list. Um, this list would become effective for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen. Um, unlike, like prior lists, we have focused only on projects that we have either secured funding or are quite sure we're gonna get funding, or in some remote cases, have listed projects that have, of high local priority, and it serves as a reminder to us to be constantly looking for funding sources for those. Uh, we do have other lists of projects that we would be able to complete if funding were to become available at some point, but rather than, you know, clog up this list with those and kind of misrepresent maybe what we can actually do, we chose to keep those off of the, um, the road list. So, uh, they are presented to you over six pages by fiscal year, um, broken down by type. We have bridge replacements, culvert replacements, rehabilitation, reconstruction, pedestrian, bicycle, resurface, and safety, uh, and in some cases, widening and shoulders. As a result of putting this letter, or list together, uh, we noticed that there was one segment that was not completed as part of our Fred Haight Drive Step project that would be approximately three tenths of a mile, uh, from First Street to the Pearl Height Bosch Bridge, and we would like to do an asphalt, uh, concrete overlay, and we think that the, um, local regional surface transportation funds, RSTP funds, that are available through the local transportation commission would be a perfect fit for that project. So, uh, we decided we'd tack that on to our road list just to see whether or not the board is interested in, uh, providing us direction to seek that funding. But I do have staff available today to answer any questions you have about the road list, uh, and also about the RSTP request.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
And did you hear Dave Palmer said that that, uh, use permit for the Hurdy Gurdy Creek Bridge should be tomorrow or at the very latest by the end of it?
No, I didn't hear that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, questions from board members?
Yes.
Mr. Superhe- Supervisor Howard?
I like super.
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 Super Howard.
Mr. Daniels? Love to talk to you about Lotte Divide Road. Um, obviously, like my predecessor Supervisor Sullivan, um, this continues to be, uh, a crazy problem in District Three. And my fear is that we're, we're, we're expending a massive amount of your budget annually on grading of Lotte Divide Road in some very steep areas that seem to last a week and a half, or less.
If, if not two days, yes.
Um, that amount to a massive expenditure of the road department's funds. And, you know, going down our list of identified projects, again, it comes up with funding source unknown, et cetera, et cetera, but you've been going through this for as long as I've known you.
Yeah.
These issues, and I know I've talked to, uh, Director Constable about this, but we've, we've gotta come up with a solution for Lotte Divide Road, because I feel that the dollars being spent there to grade it twice a year could potentially be better spent if the road department and engineering and those folks, we could kind of think outside the box. And I don't, I, I really want to know where you're at with this.
Well, two years ago, we, we had the same discussion when Mike was here, and, uh, and so we're gonna have the same discussion. And, and it is, we've, we've tried to think outside the box, and, uh, we've tried different solutions. We've, we've, we've put grindings on the road, um, and we've oiled them. It lasts for a little time. Um, we did some enzymes in the, in the soils up there, which was a natural product, um, and it worked for a short time. So, we, we have tried everything, other than spending a bunch of money, which, uh, which we don't have, um, to, to pave it, surface it like that. So, then you do run into other problems, um, being some of them are over sixteen percent, some of them are twenty-two percent, uh, the slope. So, you know, you do run into some problems there, being within the Green Diamond Resource properties. Uh, you know, they're generally pretty good to work with if we had to do some widening or whatever, but, um, it, it's coming down to, we're gonna maintain that less and less, because we have other roads that are more important within the county that, that we have an obligation to. So, you know, we've, we've put signs up, and they just get shot up, just like the Forest Service signs, so, you know, um, we've tried everything that we can. You know, I've talked to the local residents that are up there, you know, and, and some of them are, are very pleasant to talk with, and there's a few that are not so pleasant. So, um, you know, we just ask to be respected when we're working up there, not have people driving by going forty miles an hour, so, it, it is a problem, but nevertheless, are we still looking? We're always looking for a solution to save money, but I don't have the answer, and, and that's kind of where we're at.
And therein lies the ongoing problem, you know? And when I look at the expenditures over the last decade on that road, you know, nearing a million dollars, and I think of how that money, you could probably correct me on the amount of money that's been spent even a longer period of time than that, but when I think about how far that can be stretched with paving potentially some areas, I, I don't know what the balance is. I honestly don't, but I do know that if we continue down this path that we're currently on with grading twice a year, that might not be the best use of those resources. Maybe this board needs to think outside the box and find use some dollars to take care of that issue, so you're not continuing to spend close to fifty to seventy thousand dollars annually on this stretcher road.
Right.
That disappears within two days.
Yeah, we-
It's a waste of money.
We do have, we do have some ideas, but it, it comes down to, it comes down to money. So, um, we, we would definitely, we would definitely love to, to try some other options, but they're a little bit more expensive, so...
How many miles of road are we talking about?
Five. It's the first five miles up to the, uh, it's a old radio road. So, fi- five mile mark on the county road, so, that hits the last resident, and that's generally the portions of road. Where there's some steep spots that tend to unravel a, a lot faster than, than the rest of the road, so, and there's just nothing you can do about it other than to slow down, but that's, you try to educate people, that doesn't...
So, in paving projects that we've had, uh, didn't we do some of French Hill Road?
We did some with the rack, um, and I haven't, I, I was, I think we're successful. I haven't got the final agreement on Rowdy Creek, which was something that was outside of the national forest, um, but it's a failed culvert, and, and I felt that was a much higher priority. So, uh, maybe the next go-around of the rack, I'm, I'm being hopeful here, the, the cup is half full.
So, what, do you have a, an idea of a cost per mile for paving?
Well, I do. I do, but to give you that number right now, it would be incorrect, because the oil prices actually went down, so, I mean, if we had a bunch of money to spend right now, it'd be a good time to pave, because they're, they're down by like nine dollars a ton, so... It'd be about sixty thousand dollars to pave the one portion of road that is, um, that is in question. So, that, that's just the asphalt alone. The steep three is what they call it on Lotte Divide, so...
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions from Jeff, others there?
Yeah, the, um, and maybe for Heidi too, it's just, I know we have the road list at Local Transportation Commission. This really is ones that are already to construction or planning and construction. It's not the ones that need engineering and planning like the second phase of Elk Valley Road from-
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So, there's, just for the public's justification, there is another list of stuff we continue to work on. These are the ones that are being funded for immediate action.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Okay, and with that, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Did we already go through public comment? We can do it again. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back. Any further discussion? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to legislative and budget issues. Jay, have you got anything?
I'll start with the legislative. Um, we're reviewing a number of gut and amends that come through on a daily basis, talking with our advocates in Sacramento. Um, they're generally pushing the county's agenda as well as any comments that have come from the board of supervisors over the last several meetings in regards to some of the items. Supervisor Howard went over a lot of the hot topics, and you have one that you've already acted on, and now you'll have another one at the next item. So, we've been, like I said, almost on a daily basis getting updates either through Shaw and Yoder or through RCRC and CSAC, and if there's a letter required, we're bringing those forward to you. In relation to the federal agenda and platform, Greg Burns will be visiting the board in July. He'll be here, and he'll be on the agenda to go over some of the, uh, larger items that are coming from the federal government, and any items that might affect Delmar County, which I'm sure there will be a few. So, he'll be attending the meeting, I believe, the first meeting in July, and then he'll set up meetings with the board of supervisors individually to have any discussions that you guys might, might, uh, want to have with him. Uh, if there's anything in advance, just get ahold of me, and I'll have him prepped for that. Budget? You'll receive the recommended budget at the next meeting. It will be in deficit at this point. Uh, this, the recommended typically is in deficit, um, until such time as we have the books closed typically in August, and see what the state is doing with any mandates, any type of, uh, funding transfers that might be an advantage or disadvantage. We don't like disadvantages. So, that will be presented, and then we'll have approximately two to three months to balance before the, uh, October deadline.
Cool, thank you. Anything else? Chris?
Yes, Chair. Um, going back to Senate Bill eighty-eight, which is our State Water Resources Control Board bill specifically to surface water diversion and measurement, um, the response from the State Water Resources Control Board, John Hoagin, to the board, to the Resource Conservation District, I thought was, lacked the flexibility within the legislation. And I'm, I'm feeling fairly strong that this board should respond to the letter, and more importantly, on the aspects of the letter that he wrote to this county, specifically saying, "Well, we understand there's flexibility there. We understand that there's various ways to measure surface flow and diversion, but because of the scenic nature of this area and the wild and rivers designation, you guys shouldn't be exempt from the rest of the state, because, just because you have water." And it, it appeared that the conversation missed the point of what we were asking, and I'm not entirely sure what the best approach is, but I do feel a response from the board is necessary, um, because we continue to be saddled with, and we're gonna continue to be saddled with various water issues during this crisis period that seems to be extending out within the state of California, specifically around water. We're getting inundated with water issues. I feel if we don't stay on top of many of these ones are coming down, point by point, legislative act by legislative act, that we're gonna continue to get overrun, and I would like this to be one of those ones that we focus some time and energy on, in trying to get the State Water Resources Control Board to recognize our uniqueness, and to fall back on their typical responsible, because you guys are the greatest, you still need to be protected, is, in my opinion, foolish, and it's not thinking outside the box for the constituents that still have to live here and still have to generate business income, and it, and it's, um, it's frustrating to me. I didn't know what the proper response from us, but I would seek advice from the board.
Well, I know I've, uh, personally reached out to Senator McGuire's, uh, staff on this. He, uh, did tell us that he would be working on it, uh, and that he thought that there was some administrative fix that they could do. Um, I'm not sure that that is the case, um, but when I talked to, uh, Rob Christiansen, um, he said that, uh, Jason Lyles, I think, was the point on this, and that he would, um, forward my comments to him and get back to me. I haven't heard anything yet, so that is usually not a good sign. So, maybe it is time that, uh, I, I think we've already commented on this though, haven't we, several times? I don't know how many, or not on this particular issue? Okay. So, maybe we could put something together. Um, maybe Randy or Heidi, could you put something together for us, or...
So, the letter would be to the State Water Resources Control Board?
In response.
In response to the letter that they sent to the Resource Conservation District?
Correct.
Okay. Is the Resource Conservation District also gonna be sending a response to the letter that they received?
I'm not. They meet tomorrow, I'm not aware.
And I guess we're looking for consensus. Yeah.
Chair? It seems, uh, these letters going back and forth are, maybe not, they're entrenching themselves, and they're giving you blowback. Is that correct, Supervisor Howard? They're giving you blowback. They think, uh, we're not special here. So, what about sending one of, perhaps you Supervisor Howard, to meet face-on with this committee or this, and give them a face, and explain, articulate how and why we're different? Give them a rainfall count. Give them, give them things that, it's gonna be hard to dispute in a letter. I think a letter is kind of an indifferent, uh, approach. A face-to-face meeting, I think, is more appropriate.
Yeah, and, um, just to, just to clarify, that meeting has taken place. Um, it took place two months ago with the senator and these individuals that we were speaking about today on this particular hot. This particular letter, um, and it's frustrating, because I thought we did have some consensus with these individuals, and it's almost like the conversation never occurred, and I...
I don't know what another letter's gonna do, rather than another face-to-face.
Well, the letters, yeah, the, the letter came from the Resource Conservation District. It never came from the county.
And we supported that letter.
And we supported the letter, but the county's never addressed the issue.
Just a quick question, whose face would you put there?
Well, I think one of the representatives from our board. I mean, Supervisor Howard speaks clearly to the issue, and I think that would be appropriate. I'm just concerned that these letters going back and forth are not accomplishing what you want. We're losing the battle. And I think...
Hand-deliver the letter.
Then, if you want to make a change there, I think we have to make a statement, and I think it's better done face-to-face rather than sending, I'm all on board sending another letter. I think the results are going to be the same. What's the definition of insanity? The same thing over and over again. But I think we need to make a stronger presence face-to-face. That's my opinion.
I would agree, and I think it would be better if, if, if that presence was made with board support.
Of course.
And I've had, I don't remember what his name was, but the, kind of the head of our region, Anderson, I think's his last name. Anyway, I had a meeting with him when I was at a meeting over in Wairika, and he really wasn't aware of any issues or problems, so that, that's kind of the disconnect, I think, that we've got, because we did meet, as you said, a couple of months ago, and, and I kind of thought things were on the right track, and I, but it doesn't seem like it can go any farther until there's some sort of legislative fix or administrative fix, is my thinking, but I could be wrong.
The legislative language specifically allows for flexibility for regions, and that's what this letter from the Resource Conservation District asked for, was that flexibility, and we specifically asked for it from the Smith.
And, and speaking to Rogers' issue with statistics and the rainfall and the amount of water and all of that, that was all within the letter, and, and I have no problem meeting, whether you want to meet with him face-to-face or, or get in contact with him. I think that's been the board's position the entire time, so I don't think there's an issue with, with meeting with whomever is high enough up the chain to, to do some good, so I don't think that's an issue.
So, if you're, if we, I think we will by consensus approve sending the letter and have Supervisor Howard hand-deliver it if that's the choice, which is great with me, and I might invite you, next Wednesday, we have a Regional Council of Rural Counties or Rural Representatives of California, still RCRC, but they changed the name. Take the opportunity to present it to the Water Board at that time, but also come to RCRC and under public comment, gain some support, introduce you to Paul Smith and some of the people that are working the water issues, and maybe you can take them with you if it'll help. Okay?
So, is this, is this an item that we need to bring up at the next meeting, agendas, and before we can send the letter?
I think you guys can take, give direction and, and take, take action on it. You've already given your opinion in regards to the RCD letter.
All right. The only thing I would add is that I know in the past, I usually get covered because, whether it's RCRC or CSAC or WIR, I make sure they put my bill. If you're going to be going down there in county business, I think it needs to be, as per the auditor, we need to state something at this board authorizing you, authorizing that travel. Is that correct? Shouldn't we do that?
Yeah, that would assist in processing the travel claim.
Good. And I would, you know, if that requires a motion, I would so make that motion.
I'll also move on that if we, if that's, it's a money issue and it's, I'll move to Supervisor Howard.
Okay, so, moved by Finnegan and seconded by Gitlin.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay, see, no public comment then. All those in favor? Well, I guess we better poll the vote. Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay. Anything else under budget and legislative issues or under the?
Not at this time.
Okay.
The only thing that I would do is I would caution everybody to keep an eye out. The governor's always prides himself in getting his budget done on time, which means it has to be done within the next few days, week, and part of it, there's going, a little bit of chess match going on with the legislature right now, is the $2 billion that he's wanting to take out of the rainy day fund and put towards homeless and housing, and some of it is to hasten the time periods for, if it is dedicated to low-income housing and multi-housing, which the environmental concerns there by some are choking on that, but there will be a significant amount of money. Some here marked for rural communities. We probably won't get the big chunk of it, and we may not even want the big chunk of it, but keep your eye out for, there is going to be significant monies, not only directed towards mental health, but also towards housing for especially low-income multi-housing with regards to homelessness. Keep an eye.
Okay. And with that, we will move on to item number 26, which is to send a letter opposing or requesting removal of Delmar County from SB 1396, which is the Inner Coast Conservancy. Jay, I don't know if you wanted to speak to this first?
Well, I can prep it. This is a request to send a letter opposing or requesting the removal of the county from the legislation at this point. We've had some fairly significant discussions with the Senator, Senator's staff. Some of the items have not been addressed at this point, and some have been, what I would say, I guess, watered down, but the request at this point would be to follow-up on those discussions and see where we can go with further negotiations.
Yes, thank you. I agree. I think that the representation, I think, is still not particularly defined well enough, as well as the acquisition part, you know, in a county that's already close to 80% owned by state and federal governments, to continue to want more acquisitions does not seem to be in the benefit of the county, so with that, anything else?
No, I think you hit the nail on the head with the acquisition, that, you know, there's never money for management, there's always money for acquisition, and that's what we've run into before. I think that, you know, Senator Wolf may have had a good idea here. What she was trying to do is mirror the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, which has worked wonderfully, mainly because of Tom Brennan, the executive director for that, but I think that if they wanted, you know, for now, until we see what's going on, I think we should be pulled out of it. I think that there are some definite benefits to having that type of conservancy, but until those advocates, and I would tell them to send the Sierra Nevada Conservancy over here and make a presentation and to show how it works, and, you know, help us to understand it, because every time we see something like this that says, acquisition, light on management, I think the representation will be fine. In fact, I think we could get one of these board members stuck on that conservancy, or put on that conservancy, I don't mean stuck, but I think it probably, given some time and explanation, might be good, but it needs to be amended to address specifically the acquisition and management. So, I'm in support of pulling out for now.
Okay.
And right now, after having some conversations that, I know Chair Hemmingson participated with the county farm bureaus that are affected by this legislation, it was in-depth conversation, and they're all looking for support from their various boards, Board of Supervisors. There is legitimate concern, and it causes me to step back and take a closer look at what's driving this momentum behind the bill. I know some farm bureaus, because they do want to work with their state legislatures, have, have offered alternatives, especially when they believe that there could be a possibility for increased regulation affecting private lands, to offset that zone, to not affect agricultural lands per se or other areas, but to my knowledge, none of that has been incorporated into the language of the bill at this time, but I think until there's some further movement and open discussion and maybe some transparency on behalf of this county with our state senator, I would be in support of the letter.
Okay. Okay. So, just the letter? We just need consensus. Any public comment?
I think Cooper, Delmar County, it seems to me that there could be a lot of benefits. We have a lot of sensitive land, and it's, and a lot of it is not on the coast, where we have a coastal conservancy active that does a lot of good stuff on the coast, and why would we want to mix ourselves out of beneficial restoration projects? And this is not something like the Coastal Commission where you would have land use, uses, you know, it's about giving us money to do important restoration work. And so, I think we ought to become more informed about this, ask for a presentation. It's important to the public, people, young people who do restoration work, you know, this could be big opportunities for them in this, in this county. And I, I just think that it seems like an important, you know, move, and we should have more information about it and the benefits. Look at the specific benefits to this community. I know one thing I saw on a whole list is about forest restoration after fires, you know, that's important. So, we would want to be on a board that's giving out millions and millions of dollars for restoration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, may I respond?
Sure.
Unless there's no further public comment.
Is there any, is there any other public comment? Okay, I'm bringing it back to the board then, I'll close the public comment.
You know, as, as the chair said, that we've been doing a lot of due diligence behind this. I know the National Resource Committee has been paying close attention to this, trying to work with our legislative representatives to understand it further. The, the root of the problem, and where we're thinking about this a great deal is when we read like Article 2, 1441, and you see language brought into that bill that causes you to step back and not look at it from a conservancy standpoint per se, and I challenge you to take a look at the bill and really dive into some of that language. The things that really eat me on this, when you see the word protect in there, protect, conserve, and restore the region's physical, cultural, archaeological, historical, and living resources, we're doing that here in this county. We're doing it right now. 80% of the public lands and a lot of the private. And then when I see additionally, protect and improve water supply, water and air quality, and improve water use efficiencies, there's so much legislation around this right now, I don't know what we're not doing to improve those aspects of water and air. Why do we need potentially additional protections around that that could potentially strangle economically our county further? That's the transparency I'm really seeking and looking for, and conversation I'm looking for from our senator on this before we, I think, hopefully as a board, support joining a conservancy of this nature.
Thank you. Yes, Supervisor Gitlin?
I just want to echo what Supervisor Howard just said. We hear these came in, they noted, O-N-R-W, the honor of having the Smith designated as a special river, which already is, and what we have is this punishment aspect, what comes out, that's through the manifestation. You get more protection and there's more restriction, and it does hurt Delmar County, and as long as we're doing our job at the local level, and we are, then I say we don't need the additional scrutiny, because what happens is the results become punitive, and it hurts people in this county who want to build something or develop something or whatever. So, I just want to echo what Supervisor Howard said.
And I agree. It seems to me that people on the outside always think that they can protect us better than we can protect ourselves, and it does get a little tiresome, it gets a little bit old, especially when they don't want us to have, possibly have full representation on these types of things, and, and that doesn't mean that money is not still available for restoration projects through the WCB or the Coastal Conservancy or whatever it is. Those monies are still available to us, and that's what I think they're going to push this off onto is the WCB, and, you know, and there's still, there's still funds that are still available to us. My concern is the acquisition portion of it, and that's where I think the big money is going to come down, and there's not going to be any management money to go along with it, and we're going to end up with basically the kinds of things that we have now, where a lot of lands that are not managed properly. So, with that, I would ask for a motion.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously?
You might make that suggestion as we talk about getting somebody like Jim Brannum from the Sierra Nevada Conservancy to come in conjunction with somebody that speaks for the, this newly formed or would-be conservancy to make a presentation to us.
Okay, we'll look into that. Anything else, board members? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.